Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Thursday, November 20th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. Please join the board in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everybody. We have no public hearings today, so we're going to move right into discussion items. Our first is Terramere LLC Farm Stand with Heather.
We're here, Heather, she's now the planner. I believe we have representatives for the application here. If you want to come up to the table and just introduce yourselves.
Hello. One more time?
Samuels from Samuels and Silman Architects.
And I'm Chris Ahrens, the applicant.
Welcome.
So just a quick overview, this is a farm stand application on a parcel of land located at 480 Tuttle's Lane and G F were more particularly identified as Suffolk County Taxent Number The subject parcel is within the APZ zoning use district. It's approximately 19.45 acres and the development rights are owned by Suffolk County. The applicant and the design professionals have already been to Suffolk County farmland and did get approval for the farm stand and all of the associated site improvements. It's a 987 square foot farm stand building along with a cover display area for the sale of agricultural products associated with the existing farm operation. There will be electric and a bathroom in the building and other site improvements include a gravel parking area, walkways, drainage, a new sanitary system, extensive landscaping and improvements to the existing barn that fronts on Tuttle's Lane. They're also building a smaller barn towards the rear of the property that's going to be for agricultural storage only, so no sort of retail or like public coming to that building. That's going to be limited to the farm stand building near Tuttle's Lane. So if you guys want to sort of walk through the application, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Basically, the farm stand, you know, is limited to 1,000 square feet, so we kept it under, under that requirement based on developments rights sold. Most of the parking area is new. There will be 24 new parking spots. The requirement for the parking would be 15 spots, so we're adding more parking than necessary. We have two ADA parking spots in that location. There will be a new curb cut to the north side of the property. We already got highway approval for that, so that will be pretty self-explanatory. Regarding the overall landscaping plan, we have a buffer on the side of the road that kind of fronts onto the property as well as a pollinator garden kind of throughout the landscaping area. In terms of other kind of utility improvements, we have a new septic system that will be going in. We have an application to Suffolk County Health Services Board that we have tentative approval. We just need to do some testing on the existing septic system. Other than that, we're connecting public water, so that will have public water throughout the farm stand.
I mean, I did refer it over to the Water District, and as with any new water connection, they'll have to make an application and pay all applicable fees in order to get that done. Same thing with highway. You'll need to do a highway road opening permit and speaking with the superintendent. He's fine with the location of the curb cut. He just wants some sort of like paved surface within the right of way. That way the gravel isn't going into Tuttle's. He just, he said either concrete or asphalt. You guys can work it out as you go through the process with them. Engineering did have a few comments. I already forwarded that over to the design professional. They'll have to revise the plans just to answer, you know, those questions he needed. Leaching pool detail, he wanted to know about the eight by four drywall to the north of the farm stand. I think that's because it's in like a grassy area, so he just wasn't sure of the purpose of that. And then he needed the runoff factor to be adjusted on Sheet A2. Other than that, from a planning standpoint, it's an existing agricultural parcel improved with grape vines. Obviously, the Suffolk County farmland had a pretty extensive staff report that I had forwarded to all of you along with their approval, just, you know, detailing what can and can't be sold out of the farm stand. You know, it can't be a tasting room. It's limited to the sale of the agricultural products and the applicable percentages.
Isn't it mostly vines?
It's vines, yes.
And you can't have a tasting room?
Well, we can sample of products there, but that could extend to compote and other products that we're going to end up making from the grapes.
I saw something that caught my eye. Farm Education Center. What exactly is that?
The goal would be to have an area where school kids could come out and understand a little bit more about farming and farming practices. We haven't established a plan of how that's going to look or how that's going to exactly work, so right now it's sort of in the plan to, to have in case it's down the road. We want to provide that to local schools.
Okay, that's a nice idea.
I noticed you have a private well for irrigation.
That's correct.
Won't be, there won't be any connection?
Nope, that'll be just, just for the irrigation and filling the tractor for, for mixing.
And why aren't you allowed to have a tasting room?
It's, you know, this is sort of the first of its kind, as I've been told by Suffolk County when we went before them in July, but they went through what our plan is and what we're trying to do. And I, I feel like as it's part of the Economic Development Committee of Suffolk County, they want to do right by farmers as best they can, understanding the, some of the limitations that some farms might have. So, you know, I see it as sort of them, I only bought this earlier this year, so I bought it from Sam McCullough who'd owned it for 30 years. He planted these vines in the early 1990s, and so we're working together on sort of taking the farm to the next level. So I, as I understand it, it's kind of the first of its kind application before them. So, and they approved it, so you're aware.
No, I'm just curious why they didn't allow to have a tasting room at a vineyard?
And I think because development rights have been sold.
Is that correct?
Yeah, the development rights were sold. That's why Suffolk County had to approve any new structures or site work. You know, I can't speak as to the exact reasoning why. There could be something in the deed of development rights that was covenanted, but in terms of what they're proposing as part of this application, farm stand, parking, improvements to the existing barn, and then the other agricultural barn, Suffolk County was good with it as submitted. They also went to Ag Advisory who reviewed the plan last week, and they were also good with the plan as submitted. So aside from the revisions that engineering wants, if the board has any questions.
I just have two questions. The handicap, what is proposed for the walkway to the building? Because it can't be gravel for handicap.
Right, so that would be permeable paving. The, yeah, the Suffolk County, the farmland committee would like to see more permeable paving instead of a hard asphalt or concrete. So we did find the spec that was permeable, but also is accessible.
Let's give the board an idea on Sheet L900. Slide that over so they can see it on the camera. They have their paving specifications or rather gravel specifications. So number three is the vehicular. That's for the parking area. And then two is the concrete unit pavers, and then one is the gravel pavement. That's like the regular walkway. And actually, the core gravel vehicular references this standard here. It's the 5035 core gravel, which is ADA compliant. It's a honeycomb system, so that'll be for the ADA, well, actually the whole parking lot. So the ADA stalls will be compliant, and then the permeable paver is going up to the ADA ramp are also compliant. And what's nice is that they meet what Suffolk County wants in terms of permeable surfaces.
You have questions, George?
Yeah, so, so you're a vineyard. What are the, I'm curious as to what would be sold in the farm stand? Do you currently produce your own, is your wine being bottled? Are you bottling?
So with this harvest, previously, he was 100% wholesale, so he was selling to local vineyards. This year, we're about 50/50, where I kept 50% of the grapes, more or less, and Lens is making that wine. So that will be sold almost entirely this coming year, once it gets made in the next couple of years in bulk, to any larger customers who want to buy that. And then the rest of the grapes will go to, as I said, local vineyards. So what's going to be sold in the farm stand could be non-alcoholic wine, could be the compotes, could be, you know, all the products from, from Long Island, including local farms. And the goal is to, this is a farm first, last, and always. So the way I see it, it's a way to bring people to the venue and to, to sample all the products from, from North Fork.
So do you intend to do any wine tasting?
Yeah, we would sample products, yes, and then...
But not a tasting room.
I'm sorry?
But not a tasting room, where it would be like a...
What's the difference?
Like a public assembly, like Bating Hollow Farm Vineyard, for example. In the, in the Suffolk County Farmland Committee approval on Page Six, Item Six, they speak to the sale of products, so it would include 60% of the items for sale derived from the crops on site. So finished wine, no or low alcohol wine, dried fruit, compote, it's not an exhaustive list, and then 40% can be Long Island food and beverage products.
Okay.
You can, you can see other things that might not necessarily be a grape derived product.
So to enhance the tasting experience, basically, right?
Yes.
And what kind of shrubs are you going to be putting in front of the, the parking of Tuttle's Lane? If you have a landscape?
So, you know, we were thinking of, yeah, you have those landscape drawings in front of you, but, you know, at this moment, we were thinking kind of more old growth trees and then, you know, some local shrubs. We haven't exactly selected, but something kind of low lying.
Right.
It's not, you know, a visual barrier to any signage or, yeah, other.
Yeah, they did include a landscaping plan and a list. Unfortunately, this is not very clear. This was part of the Suffolk County farmland approval, but they included like road buffer perennials and some shrubs, and a majority of them are native, nothing invasive, which is preferable in terms of a planting plan from a planning perspective.
Okay, anything else, guys? Well, we have a resolution on later, so stick around and good luck. All right. Item number two, Reeves Farm, Lot 31 on 74 Tyler Drive. Matt, if you could bring us up to speed.
Sorry.
Wherever you want. All right, for the record, Matt, you're the senior planner for the Town of Riverhead. Sean, you can just introduce yourself.
Sean Morrison, I reside at 38 Milk Pot Lane, East Mauritius. I'm a local developer, just finished completing a home on 74 Tyler Drive in Riverhead. I think 31, Lot 31.
Lot 31.
Okay, so this is a covenant amendment request for Lot 31 of the Reeves Farm subdivision. This was filed in Suffolk County Clerk's Office back on May 3rd of 2002, when this board approved the subdivision back in the early 2000s. There were covenants and restrictions associated with the map, one of which was that the exterior of all dwellings and structures shall be natural wood or other natural materials, i.e. brick, stucco, stone, and not paint, and no painting shall be permitted except paint may be used for the entrance door, exterior doors, and trim, railings, and columns. So as you know, this board is a land use board. We don't generally get into the design of the appearance of single family structures, siding material, roofing, paint, like stuff, stuff like that is not even a permitted item through the building department. So this applicant is asking to amend the covenants associated with his lot, so he can essentially get a C O. The house is constructed. He used cedar impressions, which, if the board's not familiar, it's to look like a cedar shingle. If you were driving by on the street, you probably couldn't even tell that it wasn't wood.
You don't happen to have a picture, do you?
Absolutely, yep. It's in the packet. Yep, I have it here. So a couple of different things. This is a, this is a black and white at the same time. This one just shows the rest of the neighborhood here. Almost every single house is not wood. I think there's only two houses in the whole neighborhood that have cedar siding. This is another house I actually developed, same one, got a C O on that one. This is the actual house that we're waiting for the C O on. So it's cedar impressions, which is vinyl, gray tone, the sides of the house are clapboard. I think I have some more photos of other houses I completed here.
I like the tin roof over the garage.
Yeah, so this is tool one. I did this house, which is the same model, two years ago. I don't get any complaints. It matches the neighborhood and the facade of everyone else. Have a C O on that. And then I have another one, but if we go back, I could show back the aerial there. So this is 76. This is one I did. This was total clapboard, yellow tone, vinyl siding, board and batting up top, but again, it matches pretty much what everyone else was doing. I don't think anyone really realized that the planning board had put these covenant and restrictions in. And if you're looking through some of these pictures, this house, everything's either white, gray, this, that, nothing's cedar except for the first entry house in the neighborhood. And even that one is not even left natural. It's been stained and painted at this time.
There are separate covenants and restrictions that were filed by the HOA against all these lots. I'm not sure if the HOA still exists, but that speaks to appearance of houses, sizes, all that other stuff that an HOA would normally handle, but the town would not get involved.
Well, Matt, it wasn't the planning board back in 2002 that put the restrictions on. It was.
Yes, we have a set that has those restrictions, but then the HOA has their own covenants and restrictions that deal with this as well. So it's not that, so it will no longer, it will take the town out of the equation essentially from an enforcement perspective, because it's not something we would force.
They probably didn't have those impressions back in 2002.
Yeah, so it's not something we would force anyway. So it takes us out. Whatever happens between Mr. Morrison and the HOA is a separate question, whether or not the HOA even exists or is enforcing it, but those covenants still exist that we cannot touch because they're not ours. All we can do is, you know, grant relief if you so choose for our covenants and restrictions.
It's a superior product.
Yeah.
And there's no maintenance, and it's a lot more money, let's be sure.
Well, there's a few, like, no one in the neighborhood's complaining, you know?
No, no, you can't tell the difference.
There have similar products on the exterior. When I build my houses, I invite the whole neighborhood to come look and watch and, like anything, if someone's building a home in your neighborhood, they're going to, they're going to want to see it, and I invite everyone to come see. I have no complaints of what I've built and designed in that neighborhood, and this is again, the third one, and I'm looking to eventually get involved in doing it. Right now, we are under some pressure to close on this. I have a temporary C O, and it's not adequate in order to close.
I have no problem with it, Matt, because everything looks in place, nothing looks out of place.
Like I said, it's not something this board, you know, there's no probably real nexus to put that covenant.
We're not the taste police.
We're not the taste police, as the chairman has eloquently said.
We do have a resolution on later, so hang around and we'll see what happens.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate your help. Thank you, Matt.
All right. Number three, Cauliflower Square, Long Island Cauliflower Association with Greg.
All right, I would just ask, we have Mr. Israel and we have Doug Adams here to represent the application. Invite them up if they would like to join in the conversation. So what we have is a site plan application amendment seeking to amend the previously known as Long Island Cauliflower Association site plan application, now known as Cauliflower Square. This application received final approval from the planning board back on May 1st of 2025. That resolution granted approval to develop an existing seven acre parcel with a mixed use development consisting of approximately 5,800 square foot Chick-fil-A restaurant with drive-through, about 1,400 square foot medical office, a 2,600 square foot medical office, and a 6,400 square foot medical office. The nature of the desire, the changes by the applicant now deal solely with the Chick-fil-A portion of the site. So really, in this area here, the southernmost portion of the site. The proposed changes include a reduction in the size of the proposed Chick-fil-A restaurant from 5,840 square feet to 5,423 square feet. Reduction in the total amount of Chick-fil-A restaurant seating from 70 approved indoor seats and 38 outdoor seats for a total of 108, bringing it down to 87 indoor seats with the elimination of the outdoor seating. Reduction in the amount of parking for the Chick-fil-A portion of the site from 98 to 90 stalls. Reconfiguration and reorientation of the building. Previously, the building was approved on the west side of the property. It was oriented in a north-south fashion. Proposing to shift the building more towards the southern portion and reorient it in a more of an east-west fashion. Reconfigure the proposed drive-through lane. They still maintain a significant queuing line from the order point. Approximately 24 cars could fit into that queuing lane before it would back out into the, you know, the drive aisle of the Chick-fil-A site. Relocation of some dumpster enclosures, and the plan now includes a proposed offer of dedication to the Town of Riverhead for a portion of Mill Road, which would capture the sidewalks, because the sidewalks sort of turn into the site to take them out of the intersection of Mill Road. So those are the changes. So Figure One in the staff report shows the previously approved layout. As I stated, that was a, is on the west side of the Chick-fil-A site. At that point, it was a three-lane drive-through, had their canopy, you know, their order point as well as their pickup canopy. The drive-through now, drive-through lane is now proposed to be two lanes wide, still maintains the general orientation. The plans do currently, there is what I'd call a potential traffic conflict here that's seen in Figure Two in the staff report. I highlighted that area in red. I did discuss that with the applicant previously. They did come up with a workaround that hasn't been formally incorporated into the plans yet, just to reduce the number of sets that we're running off. But in Figure Three, they effectively close off that drive-through. This area would be maintained as a mountable curb, just in case anybody needed to exit, but it would eliminate that potential conflict where people are coming into the drive-through and someone is trying to get out. In terms of the RPC location, I just want to bring it up. I would like to just see some additional landscaping in this area. As the board may recall, you know, this application had been, we worked on it for several years. It went through several iterations. As a result of the review of the Fire Marshal's Office, the Fire Marshal determined that the original proposal to just bring water in off of Mill Road would not provide adequate flow and supply to serve the entire property, so they had to bring in water from underneath County Route 58. So they jacked water service underneath the road, which required an RPC to be located in the front yard. Typically, don't see RPC enclosures. I know the board has, you know, lasts, the couple of decades has shied away from RPCs in a front yard, but this was sort of born out of the Fire Marshal or the Fire District requirements. As you drive past it right now, it is not, the enclosure is not placed on the pipe yet. You just see the pipe sticking out of the ground, but it is relatively close to the road, so I've spoken to the applicant. I would just really like to see significant landscaping in this area. They did increase the overall buffer area in the front yard, so there is a lot more room for landscaping, so I have spoke to Mr. Israel's son, Herbert. He has committed to providing a significantly increased landscaping plan in that area to make sure that it doesn't, you know, have a significant visual impacts in the area.
Gentlemen, just give your names for the record, please. We have your names for the record.
Sure. Richard Israel, Richmond Realty.
Doug Adams, young associate.
Thank you.
So that's the nature of the changes in it. Again, just really dealing with the Chick-fil-A portion of the site. There are no proposed amendments to the northern portion of the site. All of the mitigating measures on Mill Road, the traffic signal, the restriping of Mill Road, that's all still in place. The applicant does have the permits from DPW for all the curb cuts and the roadwork. So these are the nature of the changes. I don't have a resolution on, just because I wanted to see a landscaping plan and work with the applicant, develop that landscaping plan before we approve it and run off additional sets, but wanted to bring it to the board for discussion and see if you have any concerns or any items that you'd like addressed.
I think you got it covered, as far as I'm concerned.
Real quick, Doug, the entrance and exit is directly across at the traffic, traffic light from Home Depot, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Has there been any...
And that's going to be?
Coordinated with 58.
Yeah, there's, there's a timing loop between the Mill Road 58 intersection. This will be signalized, you know, full, four-way signalized intersection. We did review a traffic impact study when we were doing the secret review on this project. The traffic impact study did recommend the installation of a left turn lane so that someone who's coming north on Mill Road to turn left into the site won't be blocking up traffic, so there will be a dedicated left turn lane that'll be incorporated into the Mill Road right away. So that is shown here. That was, that was one of the recommended mitigating measures from the traffic impact study that we reviewed.
Has it been given any thought as to having cross access over to Commerce, either be for motor vehicle or a walkway, sort of people from those overall Commerce drives can walk through to it?
The issue that we have is all of those buildings are leased, and in order for me to get that covenant through would be extremely difficult, and I don't know, we, we have a signalized intersection on Commerce Drive, so I don't think you want to push people to that way, but, you know, we, we've never done that. You know, on 27 Waves, which is behind Panera, we're doing it, and I'm not against it. I think it helps, but when we have leases where they're responsible for their parking lots and things like that, I'd only have to do it, you know, it's, the perfect place would be also Panera to have it next to whatever, but, you know, these things are under 30-year leases that they can't be changed.
Well, how about a sidewalk that would give access? So if people wanted to go to Chick-fil-A for lunch from any of those buildings where they'd be able to use a sidewalk as opposed, because there is no sidewalk in front of the Harley-Davidson where they can walk over to Chick-fil-A. So if you gave them some type of a cut through from Commerce into that shopping center?
We have a sidewalk along 58. You're saying you want to have other sidewalks that, again, it's more liability that you're allowing somebody who is not on that property or an invitee of that property to walk across. There is an elevation change. There's a retaining wall on the, on this site because of the grade change between this site and Commerce Park. So the answer is it could be, but most tenants today would like to know the privacy. We're, we're constructing a fence along that entirely westerly boundary so that, for that reason, that people don't traverse through, we don't get other people within our town that we keep chasing them around, that, you know, people are, have their, their things. As we keep open spacing it, we have issue with homeless, we have issues with, with a lot of things, but that's not in the planning world, you know? So I, I do recall, to your point, Mr. Hogan, and we're going to be discussing 27 Waves shortly, but, you know, unfortunately, for better or worse, really, you know, it's beyond me how it got developed, but unfortunately, the entire Commerce Drive subdivision, which was previously known as Warsaw Park subdivision, the entire thing was built out without sidewalks, and that was something that I had specifically brought up, where we were talking about the 27 Waves, you know, unfortunately...
27 Waves, you know, unfortunately, again, that entire subdivision, you know, that would never happen now if that were vacant and we were looking at those sites. You'd require sidewalks and, you know, to be built out, but there is unfortunately no pedestrian connection along Commerce. So, you know, there is a planted shoulder, you know, a grass area where if someone's working in one of the office parks, they could walk down, get to the sidewalk on 58 and walk up to Chick-fil-A, but, you know, unfortunately, those sidewalks on Commerce are non-existent.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
There's not a lot of foot traffic into places like that anyway. I mean, really.
No, I mean, 58 is not really what I call a pedestrian-friendly, uh, road, unfortunately.
Anybody else? Okay, let's go right on to 27 Waves.
All right. All right. So this will be just a real quick follow-up on the site plan application for 27 Waves LLC. Site plan application to construct an approximately 8,700 square foot one-story medical office. This application received preliminary approval from the Planning Board back in January of this year. There were a couple of conditions. One of them was to show a future cross-access with the neighboring property to the west, revise it to comply with Town Engineer comments, Water District comments, obtain approval for a stormwater pollution prevention plan, and the remainder of the site plan fee. The applicant has addressed all those issues. The plan now shows the future cross-access. Again, this may never get built out, but being that this is sort of the last undeveloped parcel in the Commerce Drive subdivision, better get it now than never have the opportunity. The plans do show a future cross-access at the northwest corner, so in theory, people who are shopping at the Warner Shopping Center over here, if they wish to get out to Commerce Drive, they could go along the side of that building, get out to Commerce Drive, which is a signalized intersection, you know, just because trying to make a left out of there onto 58 is a little hard. So whether or not that ever gets built, you know, we can have them, the applicant for 27 Waves file the future cross-access on their property. Obviously, we can't compel the neighboring shopping center to come in, but if they come in for a site plan at some point in the future, we can then require it and have it constructed. So have a final approval resolution from the board for this one. Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Now, that, that cross-access is on Panera's property, Rich? Is that correct?
No. Panera, Panera's to the south. Panera's Lot 1 of that.
Oh.
This is, you know, Panera's here. This is the vacant lot to the north. This future cross-access is with the Warner's Shopping Center.
I thought you had considered doing close to Panera.
I, I can't. Panera's under a 30-year lease.
Right, right, right.
They can't, it's a land lease. They, they built their improvements and did everything else.
Oh, okay.
If it comes back, I think it would be a great idea to create it there.
To do that, yeah.
Makes more sense. You know, the shopping center to our west, it's one of those that it is, doesn't have a lit intersection. To make a left there is the most dangerous thing in the world.
Right.
And that's where I believe that it, it works and you, you have to have that cooperation between owners.
I went, I went to my dentist the other day, and I drove past the slot. Can we get the front by the curb that, that the growth is actually going into the street? Can you get somebody in there to cut it back?
Ah. Do you know how many years I chased Mr. Edmund to do that?
Yeah.
Where I even did it for him because I own the rest of the.
It's pretty, it's pretty bad, that lot.
But now that I have approvals, we can, we can get to work then.
All right, well, that's, that sounds like a plan, but trim it up a little bit if you can, please.
Trim it up, I quit the building up.
Okay.
Is that in the resolution, Ed?
No.
To move the lot.
Just going into the street, it's actually growing into. Okay, thank you. We have a resolution later on. Number 5 for Doon Warehouse, number 52. Can you come up, Pat?
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon. Just give us your name, Pat, for the record, please.
Patrick Fedun.
All right. So we have before us a cycling application seeking to construct a one-story, 3,900-square-foot warehouse building with related site improvements, including a new IA wastewater system, parking, landscaping, lighting, and drainage. Property is located at 52 Main Road in Riverhead, particularly described as Suffolk County Tax Code number 600-84-5-13. It's located within the commercial residential campus or the CRC zoning use district. The property is approximately .52 acres in size and has approximately 125 feet of frontage along the north side of Main Road. The site currently is served by, takes access off of Main Road by a 21-foot gravel right-of-way known as Tara Lane, which is also shown as Terry Avenue on the plans. The surrounding area is mainly a single-family residential. There's three single-family residences located to the north and northeast of the property. Another single-family residence directly to the east. Now, you've got assorted commercial uses, including All-Star Bowling Alley, Dairyland Ice Cream to the south, medical professional offices, as well as a self-storage facility, which is currently under construction, located directly across Main Road to the south. Property is located within Riverhead Water District Extension number 05A. I did initiate, it is an unlisted action pursuant to SECA. I initiated coordinated review among involved agencies. I sent out the SECA coordination materials back in October. So in terms of use, the application does require a use variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals because the ware promote, proposed warehouse use is not a permitted use within the CRC zoning use district. I did provide a denial letter to the applicant so he can proceed with a ZBA application. There were several right-of-ways submitted with the title report. The applicant has supplied copies of those documents to us. We're just reviewing them to ensure that there's no conflicts with what he's proposing. But in terms of the Tara Lane access, if you see on the plans here, comes off a main road, the existing gravel driveway traverses the northeast corner of the property, and that's what serves as access to the property, which I believe is 56 Tara Lane. Obviously, the plan requires relocation of that existing gravel driveway. Plans just need to be amended to address that, the relocation of that, to just come around and off the property. Site plan does propose nine parking stalls on the east side of the building. I do note that they back, you know, that the plan, the parking stalls are right off the Tara Lane right-of-way, but being that there's only three single-family residences to the north that utilize that right-of-way, and typically, you know, we've seen with Mr. Fedun's warehouses, you know, there's one on Lincoln Street, there's a couple throughout town, they're not really high-intensity or high-traffic generating uses, so I don't really have a huge issue with the parking proposed off the right-of-way. All the proposed lighting, they're only proposing three LED wall-mounted wall packs on the back of the building. They comply with the Town Code's exterior lighting requirements in terms of mounting height at 14 feet above grade and color temperature of 3,000 degree Kelvin, and they are dark sky compliant. Landscaping, I would like to see more landscaping throughout the site. There is pretty minimal landscaping proposed on the front yard. That was also a comment from the ARB, so as the plan moves forward, we can just, we can work with the Planning Department, we can.
There's a residence behind that on the north side of the property. I'm just curious about the location of the dumpster. If you took that, moved it all the way to the west corner where that, the residential house ends, I just think putting a dumpster in somebody's, you know, backyard.
So the, the plans do propose a six-feet, six-foot stockade fence. I would recommend just some plantings here, you know, rather than have the resident at 56 Tara look at just a stockade fence, throw up, throw up a row of, you know, arborvitae along there just to soften that so they're not looking at a stockade fence that can, you know, rot and deteriorate over time. Beyond that, I mean, if, if this, if there's the fence and a, you know, a row of plantings, I don't think the location, the dumpster location wouldn't even really be visible from that residence. I mean, we can discuss that with the applicant if you'd like. So beef up the landscaping. I'm not sure if there's any access or security gates proposed there. You know, right now, the fencing just is shown on the, to really encompass the back portion of the parking lot. There's no fencing or no gates, that's not really an issue. The plan does identify cross-access in order to, you know, formalize access to that Tara Lane right-of-way. I referred the plans to the DOT. They instructed the applicant to make an application to the DOT for a permit, so the applicant will make comment, make the application to the DOT and will get formal comments on them. Plan does call for a four-foot sidewalk. You know, right now, it's unfortunately the sort of sidewalk-to-nowhere situation. The sidewalk does continue at the All-Star Bowling Lane at some point, although we'll get connectivity out. Fire Marshal reviewed the plans. They had no comments on the site plan. Riverhead Water District just indicated that a new water service application and RPZ submittal will be required, and key money will be required prior to the issuance of a CO. The Town Engineer had no comments on the site plan. I did review, refer the application to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. Site plan was reviewed by the Architectural Review Board at its meeting on October 22nd. The applicant was going to revise some doors, windows, add landscaping, and provide material samples to the ARB prior to the issuance of a final recommendation. So in terms of process, obviously, they need the use variance. Wanted to bring it to the Planning Board to see if you had any planning concerns. If there's any significant concerns, they can be relayed to the ZBA, but before this board can take any action or make any determination, the ZBA will need to grant that use variance.
Great. Yeah, I kind of agree with it. Pat, if you could, only because I've seen dumpsters, no matter how much you take care of them, they're gonna, they're gonna either fall apart, get damaged, whatever, to move that just to the west. You know, everything's on, on paper right now.
Yeah.
And that home has been there forever. You know, a nice row of green giant arborvitae's, you know, just to keep.
So they're bringing, we want to bring the fence back three feet and replant it in the back?
Yeah, yeah. That's my biggest concern is, is your neighbor.
Just one, one question here.
Yes.
On the east side of the property, is the Tara Drive and then the parking spaces, how do you get to them? Just pull in?
Yeah, you pull in and pull out of it.
It just, Tara Lane's gonna turn into just an alleyway.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the, the DOT may look for some improvement. They may look for like an apron or something, just so, you know, if there's more traffic, you know, you have gravel coming out, but the existing right-of-way will maintain as-is. They will widen it a little bit just to facilitate the two-way traffic, you know, onto a portion of the subject property, but for all intents and purposes, Tara Lane will effectively remain as-is.
And who takes here a snow removal?
I'm assuming that's the neighboring property owner.
Yes.
Whoever, whoever handles it now. It's not, it's not a town right-of-way, it's a.
Right, right.
It's a private road, so I'm assuming that's just handled by the, the existing owner.
Pat, you'll be part of that?
Okay. But you'll have to do the snow removal for your building.
Right. The parcel to the left, is that preserved?
Uh, this parcel, I, I don't believe so. Is that the sod, is that part of the sod farm that connects the, yeah, so I don't think, I don't think that's preserved.
How many, how big are the units, Pat? How, how?
Probably 1250 each.
All right, so you got three.
Okay. Anything else, guys? Okay, Pat, go on. Okay, number six, TJ OC Real Estate Holdings, with Greg. Good afternoon.
If we could just get your names for the record?
Chick Voorhees, Nelson Pope Voorhees.
Matthew Elward, R&amp;M Engineering.
Mike Kelly, TJ OC.
All right. So this is a discussion on the final environmental impact statement for a proposed major subdivision and site plan application. This is an approximately 15.8 acre site, which is located next to J&amp;R Steakhouse over in Calverton on Middle Country Road. The proposed subdivision seeks to subdivide the existing 15.8 acre lot, create seven single-family residential lots, one commercial lot. The site plan proposes to develop that commercial lot along Middle Country Road with approximately 30,000 square feet of ground floor commercial space, 36 one-bedroom apartments on the upper floors, as well as a roadway sewage treatment plant that would serve the entire development, as well as a recharge basin for the roadway. Planning Board issued a POSDEC on this application. We had the combined public hearing on the subdivision, the site plan at the DEIS on September 4th of this year. The applicant submitted the final EIS. There really weren't a tremendous amount of comments. We did get some comments from our consultant regarding traffic, which they have addressed, and there were only three speakers. We had, there were three residents. You had Thomas Houghton, Mark Malosky, and Karen Kemp, as well as myself and member Bayer. So there weren't a tremendous amount of substantive comments, so that's why it's not a super-lengthy document. There were some modifications to the proposed action based on comments that were received. One of the comments that Mr. Malosky had requested was basically pushing back the fence on the west side of the property so as to not obscure visibility of his, the sign for his business. So that plan, that the fencing was pushed back about 75 feet north on Middle Country Road. They are proposing, one of the requests was to increase to a 20 or 30-foot buffer. Unfortunately, that could not be accommodated based on the size of the roadway setbacks and just the general layout of the subdivision, but they are proposing a significant buffer along that, the first portion of that western driveway and the subdivision roadway. Justin, if we could zoom in on that. There will be a 10-foot buffer, vegetative buffer along here. The roadway does come out. There is a proposed, you know, buffer area on the back of the residential subdivision lots. So those were the modifications to the project, as well as they are going to incorporate a eastbound left turn lane into the site, again, which will be under jurisdiction of the New York State DOT. So those were the modifications that were proposed. Other than that, the FEIS is straightforward. I do have a resolution on to accept the FEIS. That'll get distributed and posted on the town's website, and then the next step would be findings by this board.
Okay.
Well, Greg, the, the drawing of switching the building, moving the building, was that incorporated?
So, yeah, so there were, one of the alternatives that was looked at in the DEIS was a, the reorientation of the building. You know, right now, it proposes, for lack of a better, Justin, can we zoom in a little bit? Good. So you have the, you know, the two wings of the building here. This is the commercial wing, and this is the commercial wing. One of the alternatives was to basically rotate it so that this would be a commercial wing, and then this would be a commercial wing. I think that's something that can be addressed through the findings if that's a, if that's the preferred design of the application. I see merits on both of the alternatives. You know, one of, one of the things that I know you and I have spoken about is that, you know, if the, in this orientation with the apartments on the upper floors on this wing, you know, anyone living in those apartments, they open their windows, you're basically opening your window to, you know, a main highway in the town. Doesn't really offer any sort of buffering from State Route 25, so if though, if that building was reoriented, it might provide a little bit of separation from the residences so that they could open their windows. It's kind of unique in that, you know, these commercial buildings, you know, half of the commercial space is already obscured by the building, so if the building was sort of rotated, you'd have a different, you know, architectural view of the building, but it wouldn't really increase or decrease commercial visibility necessarily, being that half of the building is already obscured on the back end. One of the other benefits from that is that in the alternative version where the building is switched or reoriented, this access driveway to the commercial parking lot was moved back, which one of the things that was discussed early on in this project was, you know, we currently don't have any applications on Malosky's poultry farm, but down the road, it does share a similar zoning, both Hamlet Center and residential in the back. So down the road, if Malosky's poultry farm was ever redeveloped with a similar-sized development, there's additional queuing capacity down this roadway. I don't think Malosky's, you know, I don't think Malosky's would have a separate curb cut. We may end up just doing a cross-access here, so one of the benefits is to just provide additional queuing capacity on that road going out to Middle Country Road.
Do we have a cross-access on the?
It's something we're gonna, it's something that'll be required. You know, that was discussed early on in the, the site plan review. But again, those are, those are things that would come up in a, a. But again, those are, those are things that would come up in a, I believe in a finding statement that, you know, if the board agrees, I don't know where the board leans, we can have a discussion on that, but that's just sort of my initial take on that.
Well gentlemen, I've probably spoke to at least twenty people, because this is, you know, it's been open to the public. The first thing they say to me is that, who would one live just twenty-five feet off of twenty-five in, in a top apartment? If you turned it around, you know, you're going fifty, hundred feet away from twenty-five, and I don't, like Greg says, I don't, I don't see any, you know, bad problems with just turning it. And I've looked at it for, you know, for the last six months, eight months. I, I would lean towards going the other way.
Okay, I- So we're ready to discuss that? I, you know, we have-
Right, right.
Mike Kelly is here, Matt from the civil engineer. I'll just start that we have looked at that, we are not in favor of that configuration. Our preferred configuration is what you see, it's the proposed project plan in the EIS. There's a number of reasons for that, and I'll just point to the, oh, this, this should work. The residential parking for the units that are here and here is basically in the back, so it's separated from the commercial parking. When you reconfigure it, the, the parking becomes more communal and it's not as well separated.
Just look at the, but look at the distance that a resident would have to walk.
It's-
It's a hike.
Again, mixing the commercial parking with the residential parking is not our preference.
And if you know my wife, the less, the less she has to travel with groceries.
Yeah, and Mike, Mike can speak to the occupancy of the units, Mike Kelly is here, but, you know, he's confident that these units can be occupied, that they will be rented. Couple of other aspects, if you're traveling east on twenty-five, you have commercial visibility. I don't fully agree with Greg's comment that the commercial visibility is the same in either configuration. I think that the horseshoe facing north, if you want to call it that, if you rotated this, you would have much less visibility for the commercial uses. Michael speak about it, but I have personal experience with a project in Brookhaven that was designed similar to that with the visibility obscured, and it was not successful for commercial purposes. So we do want this to be successful, it's obviously very important. Also, just from a building mass standpoint, as you're going east or west on twenty-five, the building will appear less massive. Now that's for a couple of reasons. First of all, if you look over your shoulder as you're passing directly in front of the site, it's just a second in time, but as you're approaching from either the east or the west, the opening of the buildings toward the west, this side here, is much more open. This portion is lower in height, and so again, as you're approaching from the west, it's going to look less massive. As you're approaching toward, toward the east, it's gonna look less massive. And Matt just did some measurements, the building is actually fifty feet narrower in this configuration than it would be if you rotated that whole horseshoe. We thought that was a very important point. Those are just some of the points, we have other experts here, but it is definitely not our preferred configuration. We do believe we conform to HC and RB40 zoning in all respects. We've been down this road for a long time. My company did the draft environmental impact statement. This has really gone very smoothly, and this is the part of the discussion, it looks at alternatives, but we don't feel there's a compelling reason to go toward this alternative. But I will compliment the board on the EIS process, the FEIS process, and we would look to have that resolution adopted this afternoon to accept the FEIS, but our preference is this configuration. Pass it over to Matt as to amplify anything-
Yeah, I just think, I think as Chick said, it, it's preferred alternative is to have the horseshoe facing to the west. One other thing that it does do, if we did rotate it, in addition to making the building now appear wider on Route 25, it's also channelizing all that commercial activity to the north towards the residence. Whereas now, well, most of that activity within this horseshoe is to the west, to another commercial piece. So we'd like to keep everything kind of separate, commercial towards the front, residential towards the back. We do understand that is a bit of a distance to the, to that front wing, but as Michael explained-
That's a-
Rental preference.
Exactly. You don't like it, you don't rent it. Mike?
Right, so, fully understand that the comments and, as you've heard discussions, we've had discussions internally as well, we've also had it with various marketing people who have worked on this and understand the marketability of the retail really goes with visibility. Ironically, the seller of this property, when I bought it, owns a property that Chick mentioned in Brookhaven. So his property's on the corner of North Country Road and-
North Ocean.
North Ocean, sorry, North Ocean Avenue and Middle Country Road, kind of on the border of Selden and Quorum. And he designed a, a big shopping center and the building backs, so the back of the building, similar to what you're requesting, backs onto Middle Country Road. And his parking is fully one-hundred percent in the rear of the building. So when you're on Middle Country Road and you're passing Middle Country, you don't know what that building is about, you don't know what, what tenants or retail users are in that building, because you can't see it. The retail space is dead, and it's been dead for, since he put it up. But it was the request, I'm sorry?
It's just a big wall.
Yeah, that's exactly-
Wall, I, I know, I know what you're talking about.
Right, so, so it was the brainstorm of some members of the town of Brookhaven at that time, and it's dead. Now, I, I know it firsthand, I sat on the IDA in Brookhaven for many years, and he came to us several times to say, I can't get anybody in there because they're afraid to lease it up and spend their money. So that's a major concern as an, as an owner. I'm not, you know, we're, we're not just talking twenty people, this is millions of dollars that are going to be invested in this, and we want to, we all collectively, our side, your side, every resident, we want to make sure this thing's a success, so we want to put our best foot forward in terms of, in terms of the walkability, right? Always a concern, right? You want to park somewhere where you're, where you're living.
Look, Mike, let me ask you, would you rent an apartment on twenty-five at twenty-five feet away?
In, in-
Would you rent the top apartment?
In, in a heartbeat, in this day and age, all day long, because there are none. And I'm not, I'm not trying to be arrogant, I'm just saying, the marketplace, the way it stands right now, we as a region, we don't have enough housing stock, let alone enough diversified housing stock like this, and I'm-
Right.
I'm really trying not to be combative.
And Ken, if you take a look at mainstream Riverhead, half of those units are all facing the commercial, you know, Main Street Riverhead. And the market, I'm working on another project in Pulaski Street, the market for these rental units, when they go on the market, they have a waiting list to get in. There's a big demand. The hospital's about to expand, they'll be coming in probably for a parish within the next few months, and, and they're gonna take Mercy High School, make that a learning hospital and a long-term care. There, how many employees they got up there now? They're gonna have more. And those are a lot of the, those are a lot of the people that are renting these units. So I, I think that in this case, this, the project conforms in all respects to the zoning requirements of the town of Riverhead, and I agree, I, I'm familiar with that building in Brookhaven too, and we don't want any, this is a mixed use, but with the mixed use, you also want to make sure that we have full occupancy on the retail, so that the tax bill is not effective to the town of Riverhead. Right now, we've had two eight percent tax increases, which had an effect in this election, and we have more space, open space preserved than any other town in Suffolk County, so I'm, this has nothing to do about paving over river. This is about, on the residential, and even some of the ones that I was on the town board, the one next to us, it's hard to rent in the back there, because the visibility is important, and I think if we made a wall in the front, it, it's gonna affect the retail, and that's gonna be a major component of this thing, so.
I would be more concerned about leasing up the retail component than, what do we have, sixteen units on that side?
No opposition from me on the project, I like the project, but it, it's up to your designers to make, if you turned it, to make it attractive, you know, and-
It's the marketplace that, that drives that.
Yeah, you see, don't forget, the traffic you have there is doing fifty-five miles an hour, it's not doing ten miles an hour on Main Street. That's, that, that is my biggest concern, and the people that I talked to, the first thing they said, they didn't say that they didn't like the project, it's like, who wants to rent right on twenty-five? And that's, and that's, that's all, Mike.
The fortunate part is probably, it's not gonna be them, right? They're probably in a house, the twenty people that, right? So it's, the people who are gonna be living here want to be somewhere other than their mom and dad's basement or the top of their garage somewhere.
This project also is good in the fact that, that the package plan we're gonna put in, that it's possible that the, the restaurant might be able to participate, and we eliminate that, the old-fashioned septic system that's there now. And also, in my opinion, when you have it this way, it opens up between the Malosky property and this way, there's no wall there, because I think that'll be important down the road if the family wants to develop that prop. I hope they don't, I hope the kids take it over and stuff like that, but I think it's a better look, a better open space between the two properties.
More connectivity.
And I know Mark is very concerned about looking, you know, that's why we moved the landscaping back and fences down, and we wanted to preserve the integrity of his property.
So the connectivity, if that future development does happen, if and when, and I think the marriage of those two sites is better set up with the orientation of the building heading west. So again, the, the rents that likely come for a one-bedroom apartment over retail, it's not gonna be great. So the people who could afford that wouldn't mind a walk, because now they have their own place. So the, the haves and the wants are, are a little bit easier judged and juggled on a one-bedroom rental above versus thirty thousand square feet of retail that can't be seen or accessed in a, in an easier manner, so.
Right, in visible manner, and I, I think a lot of people prefer to see some type of parking within the parking lot as they're going to shop there, right? I know-
By convenience, you know?
You want to see that it's populated, correct?
The other, the other comment, Greg, on the queuing, in the future, right, if the, if the two properties are cross-accessed, the queuing probably can easily be queued inside of each one of those communities, doesn't have to queue up just on that shared entryway, but.
I mean, I was really more just thinking, you know, I mean, thirty thousand square feet of ground-floor commercial, again, Malosky's is a similar size, so I mean, if you were looking at sixty thousand square feet, and again, this is just a long-term planning thing. I don't know exactly what, off the top of my head, what the distance is here, but again, this is not a signalized intersection, so I mean, anybody who, if you're stopped here, you know, potentially making a left, you know, I mean, again, I don't know.
About a hundred and fifty feet or so.
So I mean, a hundred and fifty feet, what, seven, eight vehicles maybe?
Mm-hmm.
You know, not, not out of the realm of possibility to think that there could be seven or eight vehicles between the residences and the commercial use looking to exit that site, being that it's not signalized. Again, if you're trying to make a left out of that location, you might be there for a while.
And we have a left, we have a-
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's a right turn lane, a right turn lane and a left turn lane.
But if we're gonna, if we're considering the farm to the right and then the future development, I, I believe this layout with the C facing each other is more of a community then, whereas if we're taking two blocks, we're essentially taking two commercial, you know, mixed-use properties and separating it by-
Couple of walls.
Oh, no, a residential, really, a public street, that's going back to seven lots. We would want that community to face each other, that the, the commercial community, mixed-use.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, I agree for sure. I, I think it's complimentary to the-
Are you finished with, with Ken?
What's that?
I have something else-
If we meet all development standards, some of that is the private enterprise risk assessment of each project, and they're the ones that make the determination, because they're the ones spending the millions of dollars signing the bank loans and all that stuff, so you have to give a little defer, difference, deference there to, to that.
Do you have some questions?
When you submitted the impact statement, there was also a third alternative, which was build the houses in the back and just have one small commercial building in the front, which I thought was a much better use, because I thought this whole thing is an over-intensification in the front. Just having the one small building and twelve lots in the back, you get, you don't need to have sewage treatment plant, because that goes out the window, okay? And they just put individual for the homes and the small one again for the commercial.
Again, I think the, the powers that be in the town zoned-
Boy, I, I totally understand it. I mean, you, you're certainly well within what you, what you should be doing, I'm just saying, I think it's an over-intensification of use, and that, somebody else has made a mistake or drew the line that way, and that's the way it is.
We just-
Why we bought it the way-
Well, we bought it that way, and the town just, as you've got people know, that we just completed another rezoning of the entire town, and we hired consultants, a million dollars, blah, 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 everything, or half a million, whatever, we paid the consultants, and we just did a comprehensive update of our comprehensive plan, and probably that joke could have been addressed for this, but I don't think this area-
Well, it would have been, it would have been addressed along the whole line, too.
Yeah, it's got to be the whole thing.
I understand, I just, I still, it's my own feeling.
Anybody else? Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
Have a nice afternoon. You too. Forty-one twenty-nine, Middle Country Road, Bola Market Canopy Site Plan, with Greg.
Go back to the captain's chair here. Justin, can we just zoom out a bit on this? Alright, so this is just a quick follow-up for a site plan application, forty-one twenty-nine, Middle Country Road, the Bola Market Canopy. This is a site plan application that was approved by the board back in April. They were proposing basically a refresh of the existing Bola Market out there, they were gonna put canopies over their existing gas islands, they were gonna formalize curbing along twenty-five sidewalks, landscape areas really unified the site a bit. One of the conditions of the approval, the board at the time of the adoption of the administrative approval resolution, the board wanted to see, rather than just a flat canopy, the board requested a hip roof. The resolute administrative approval stated that prior to approval, you show a hip roof canopy in a form approved by the planning board, so they've submitted the plans and now show the hip roof. If the board is amenable to it, I do have a resolution on to approve that. They're almost ready, I think they've just gotta file, I believe they filed their cross-access, so I think this is the last remaining piece before they can-
These individual, or is it gonna be one long?
So there are two individual gas islands, so there will be two canopies.
Okay. Not, it's not an individual for each station?
No, 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 it, it, one canopy for each of the-
Of the two.
I'll show you.
You have the canopy, John?
So there were two rows of gas pumps here, one canopy here, and then a smaller canopy here, so it's not gonna be one massive canopy. So as long as the board is okay with the hip roof on the canopies, we have a resolution.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with anything Bola does usually is top notch.
No, it's a real, nice real shot in the arm for that, it'll clean it up.
Yeah.
Formalize the access.
Any else, gentlemen?
Oh Greg, just real quick, the, the color scheme that's there, the, the car wash is gonna be more or less the same color?
This is, this is not the car, this is not the car wash, but-
Oh, right, 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 the one in Calverton.
This is the Calverton one, western, western.
Milligan's gas station. Alright, number eight, three ninety-three, Pulaski Street Improvements, with Greg.
We do have a representative from the application here- We do have a representative from the application here. I want, if you would like, he can come in and join in the conversation. Uh, but what we have is an administrative site plan application. I apologize. I'll just, I'll let you introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Montes Korsakas.
Uh, so administrative site plan application seeking to pave an existing gravel parking area, install drainage systems, update internal sidewalks and curbing and install new lighting at the site of an existing professional medical office. Uh, the site's located at 393 Pulaski Street, which is located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Osborne and Pulaski Street. Uh, it's located in the Village Center zoning district. Site's presently improved with a approximately 2,000 square foot and one-story building currently occupied by one-on-one physical therapy. Uh, the site is served by two curb cuts, one on Osborne Avenue, one on Pulaski Street. Uh, there are no modifications proposed to either of those curb cuts. Uh, it's a mix of commercial, residential and institutional in the area with a commercial shopping center across Osborne to the west, uh, Riverhead Middle School up to the north, then you've got residential use surrounding it. Essentially what they're looking to do, there's an existing gravel parking area in the back of the building, which is seen in figures three and four on my staff report. Uh, it's an existing gravel parking lot that has a landscape buffer along the edges. Uh, they're looking to just pave this gravel, uh, pave the gravel surface. It'll provide an asphalt surface. They're looking to install drainage systems. Uh, they're going to update existing light poles with dark sky compliant lighting. Site contains a total of 21 parking stalls, um, fencing and gates. Uh, the existing woven fence along Osborne will be replaced with a four-foot high black vinyl chain link coated fence. Uh, we did get comments from the town engineer, just simple, they wanted a soil boring and a groundwater elevation column added to the plans. Uh, very straightforward, no objection to this, um, you know, based on the nature of the, uh, and I do apologize, they will be adding a four-foot flush mount sidewalk to the curb. Uh, right now, I guess, based on the previous uses, there's some garage doors here and there's some like little bump outs here. So they're going to smooth that out. Based on the nature, the physical therapy nature, it makes sense to make the site more accessible for patients coming to the site. So no objections to this, simple modifications with the engineering comments, and I have an approval resolution.
Can we just look at, at figure three?
Yes.
Which shows the fence?
Yes. So that, so that fence is actually, that was taken standing in the,
Is there any reason it has to extend on the east-west? I understand if you want to put a border on, 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 uh, Osborne Avenue, but you have to extend it.
Well, so that fence is going to be removed. So that figure three was taken, I was probably standing like right here, looking into the gravel parking area.
Right.
So that fence and that gate, that's going to be removed. This will be widened to 24 feet to facilitate two-way traffic, but that gate's going to be removed. Uh, the location of the proposed, you know, the, the four-foot chain link fence will be around the perimeter of the property here.
Nice job there. Place looks great.
Yeah, it looks good. Anything else, guys?
I'm, I'm all for the, uh, black top and, I mean, you've done a beautiful job so far and that could just,
Um, thank you. We have a resolution in a little bit while. So if you want to hang around, you can. Thanks, Greg. All right. At this point in time, we're going to take public comments on any of the resolutions. Okay? Not seeing any takers, gentlemen?
I'll move resolution 2025-106, Malice Property minus subdivision. Resolution is granting two 90-day extensions of the approval.
Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I'll move resolution number 107, reseform resolution.
I'll second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I'll move resolution number 2025-0108, Paramar LLC Farm Stand. Resolution classifying an action as a type two action pursuant to SECRE and granting the farm stand approval for an application seeking approval to construct a 987-foot square foot farm stand. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
Resolution 2025-109, 393 Pulaski Street, site improvements. Resolution granting site plan approval for a site plan application seeking to pave an existing gravel parking area.
Second.
Moved in second. Uh, do you think guys really think we should do this? I'm, I'm not sure it's a good idea. Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I'll move resolution 2025-110 for 27 Waves LLC, granting the final site plan approval. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I'll move resolution number 111, 4129 Middle Country Road, Bola Market Canopy Plan.
Second.
Okay. Moved in second, discussion. Greg, uh,
Yes.
I know with some of these canopies, they get crazy with the lighting. Is this compliant?
Yes. All the light, all the lighting on the site plan is all under ma, you know, under the canopy. There's no non-compliant lighting within the canopy.
Okay.
They weren't, they are updating the rest of the lighting throughout the site.
Awesome. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I'll move resolution 2025-112, TJOC Real Estate Holdings. A resolution to accept the final environmental impact statement for the development plan to, for the vacant 15.8 acre parcel. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries. Okay. That's the end of today's resolutions is open for public comment. If anybody speaks about anything, they can come up now. Or they can go home and watch football. Um, meeting minutes, we'll have, uh, next, next meeting? Okay. No SECRE actions, Greg? Correspondents? Any other business people? No? Uh, our next meeting date is Thursday, December 4th. So we won't see you before Thanksgiving. So everybody have a safe and happy one.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Can we get this motion closed?
Motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. We closed a little early.
Well, we didn't, I don't think we had a vote, so we're still open.
Okay. Um, we are asking everybody to leave. They're going anyway. Um, we're going into executive session for legal advice regarding litigation and performance bond for a residential subdivision. So moved?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye to go on executive session. Justin?